Meeting called or roll call, please.
Dallas Lane.
Here.
Eugene Davis.
Here.
Timmy Carter.
Here.
Barry Chaney.
Here.
Frank Justice.
Here. Sir requested documents from regular commission meeting held on April the 23rd, 2012 is submitted and unauthorized mayor to sign and execute seven minutes.
Go move. Second motion.
Equestrian comment. Not in favor of simple saying aye?
Aye.
As opposed, motion passed. On business from the floor, before we take any business that might come in, I want to recognize some young ladies so that we can get them on the road and get them what they need to do. This is a proclamation reading and photo with the Paute Lady Panther softball team. We passed this proclamation the other day. I will reread it, we will not need to take a vote on it, then we'll take our photo up. This is a proclamation recognition honor of the Paute Lady Panther softball team and coaches staff for winning the 2012 15th Regional All-A Championship. Whereas the 2012 Paute Lady Panther softball team did compete in the 15th Regional All-A Championship Tournament. And whereas the 2012 Paute Lady Panther softball team with outstanding team play did win their first game by defeating South Floyd with a victory, with a 21-0 victory. In the second game, the team defeated McGoffin County 10-1. In the championship game, the team defeated Pansville with a 7-3 win, becoming the 15th Regional All-A Champions. And whereas the 2012 Paute Lady Panther softball team's accomplishment not only brings honor and recognition to the team and its coaches, but also brings great honor and recognition to their school and to all citizens of the City of Paute, Kentucky. And whereas the 2012 Paute Lady Panther softball team shall hence therefore be well-known throughout the region as its accomplished winning program, such an accomplishment is worthy of being honored and recognized by the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paute. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the City of Paute as follows. That the 2012 Paute Lady Panther softball team... What are you going to give me, alphabet? If I do your names wrong, just tell me, okay? Is that Ayla?